Good evening, everyone. Looks like we're missing Council Fennessey. Is there anyone else we're missing? Okay, looks like we're all present. Before we begin, can I get a motion to come out of a non-public session?
Motion to come out of a non-public session? Second.
Motion made, second to come out of a non-public session. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule. Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fennessey.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kenneson.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
And for Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Great, thank you. And second, can I get a motion to seal the minutes?
Motion to seal the minutes. Second.
Motion made, second to seal the minutes. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fennessey.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kenneson.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Motion is adopted. So, welcome to our December fourteenth, twenty twenty. You know, meeting electronically due to COVID-nineteen coronavirus pandemic. And in accordance with the Governor's emergency order number twelve pursuant to executive order twenty twenty zero four, please note that in accordance with the Governor's emergency order, we have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing this meeting. Instructions are provided on the agenda on the City Council website at conquerednh.ledstar.com/calendar-aspx. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the City Council have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting, and the public has access to listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through clicking the following website address: If any member of the public does not have a website access, they may dial the telephone number one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. If dialing from a landline, you may call in toll-free at eight seven seven eight five three five two five seven. The webinar ID number is eight five zero seven five seven three two five six eight. For those of you who want to provide public testimony in the public hearing portion of the meeting, if you are connected to the Zoom website, you may click on the raised hand icon on the attendees section and make the request. When the time is appropriate, you'll be recognized by me to provide your testimony. For members of the public who are participating by phone, you may dial star nine to alert me that you want to testify. We will not be using the chat function in this Zoom for this meeting. Please note that testimony is only allowed for items that have been scheduled for public hearing. Public participation is not authorized for the other items on the agenda. If anyone has public problem accessing this meeting, please call six zero three two three zero seven one eight or email to citycouncilmeeting@conquertnh.gov. In the event the public is unable to access this meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled by that time. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call votes. So let's start the meeting by taking the roll call attendance. And when you state your presence at the meeting, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. Madam Clerk, if you may call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Present, home alone, no one in the room.
Mayor Boule.
Present, and I am in my office alone.
Counselor Champlin.
Present, and I am in a room in my house, my home, alone.
Counselor Fennessey.
Present, I'm in a room by myself.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Present, I am in my home in a room by myself.
Counselor Hatfield.
I'm present, I'm home in a room by myself.
Counselor Keach.
Present, home alone.
Counselor Kenneson.
Present, home alone.
Counselor Kretovic.
Present, in a loft in my house. There is my husband, Bill, Mike, Jack, Jessica, and Cora are here, not in this room.
Counselor Mattson.
I'm home alone in this room.
Counselor Nian.
Present, at home, alone in this room.
Counselor Pierce.
Present, at home alone.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Present, alone in this room in my house.
Counselor Todd.
Here at home, alone in this room.
And Counselor Warner.
Present, here alone in this room.
Thank you very much. Wonderful to see everybody. If you would all mind unmuting and join me for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It gets better every time. Thank you.
You're very kind.
Okay, so we have minutes for November ninth, twenty twenty before us. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Motion made, second. Is there any comments or changes to the minutes? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fennessey.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kenneson.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Abstained, I was not here.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Abstained.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
And the motion is adopted. We have two folks that I'd like to bring in one at a time to the panelists. The first is, I'd like to recognize our friends from the Capital Region Food Program as we would like to proclaim December twenty twenty as the Capital Region Food Program Month.
Aye.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here again. This is delightful, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. Tim Grother here with Maria as well from the Capital Region Food Program.
So.
The floor is yours. If you'd like to just talk a little bit about, perhaps, I mean, if you would give a quick two-second overview, but I think we're all interested in some of the challenges you're facing this year and how you're overcoming those.
Yeah, absolutely, Maria. Please feel free to go ahead and share your thoughts.
Okay. So, for those of you I haven't met before, I'm Maria Manis-Pensho, and I am the Chair of the Capital Region Food Program's Holiday Food Basket Project. Tim is the Chair of our Board of Trustees. We were looking at it, this is our forty-seventh year for the Holiday Food Basket Project, and I have been involved as the Chair for almost thirty years. This is the first year where we are doing it different. As we all have been impacted by COVID, it has really pushed our resilience and our resolve to get it done. Because of COVID restrictions and because our mission is to assist those in need for hunger insecurity, we were concerned about making sure we were protecting the public, at the same time making sure we were fulfilling our mission and getting food to people who needed it. A task force was established back in April to take a look at what we could do differently, anticipating that come this fall, we would not be able to execute the Holiday Food Basket Project as we had at the National Guard Armory. As it turns out, we wouldn't have been able to use the National Guard Armory. We have decentralized the program, we've worked it a different way, but rest assured, we're going to be able to assist everybody who's in need just differently this year. We have established staging areas throughout Concord as well as in our satellite areas, and we are putting together the boxes at a warehouse in Loudoun. One of our trustees has a location that he has graciously given to us so that we can do it. Doing social distancing and the square footage is about one and a half times as the Armory, and we're only using thirty-four volunteers to put the boxes together. We already shipped out items for the standard boxes so that the food would be in the food pantries to assist anyone who needs it. This year has really tested all of us to look at what's most important and to make sure that we are trying to assist our neighbors and doing it in such a way that we're protecting the public at the same time. So it's been a tall order, but we've had some really incredibly talented volunteers and members of our board that came forward and helped us to craft this new model. And the most important thing for us was to make sure that we would be able to do the Holiday Food Basket Project again this year and help those in need. So, we're doing it.
Thank you, Maria, and all I would like to add is additional information can be found on our website at capitalregionfoodprogram.org.
Great. Thank you both. Counselor Keach has a question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Just a comment. I just want to thank you for all your work, and I want to recognize your dad, who started this thing a long time ago. And as my mother turns eighty, he started this whole thing, and you're legacy and you've carried it on, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Questions, comments? So I just want to say thank you by way of a quick story. Today I had someone in my office who had a person who had surgery at the hospital, they were being released, and they had absolutely no food in their whole apartment. And so recovery was going to become much more difficult, obviously, if they have no food. And so when we talk about food scarcity and what you do not only at the holidays but year-round is so critical to the health and welfare and the safety of our citizens, I just have to say a huge thank you, and truly not what you do just during the holiday, but all year round. You make such a difference to our community and the fact that the model that you use and all of the money and proceeds and all the effort going back into food is something I just, each year I grow more touched about everything you do and how appreciative, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wish you all happy holidays. Stay.
We will see you next year.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Take care. So with that, now if we could bring in our friends from Black Ice Hockey. I believe we have Dan Luker and Chris Brown.
Gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me?
You sure can.
Okay. I don't know if Dan's got on or not.
I believe he is.
I'm here. Can you hear me? There you go. I'll introduce myself. I'm Chris Brown. Obviously, business owner of New Hampshire Distributors, but also part of the creators of Black Ice ten, ten-plus years ago and part of the board, so Dan, I'll let you go ahead. Yeah, Mayor and Councilors, thanks for having us on. I'll be brief. I served as on the board and as legal counsel to the eighteen eighty-three Black Ice Pond Hockey Association for, I don't know, ten and a half years now. It's been a joy. We've had some fun, and it's been a great partnership with the city. We wanted to come on tonight just to let you know that we're doing a couple of things. Once, one, we made the smart move, I think, to postpone for this coming January because of COVID. There's no way we could pull that off. And, but on the heels of that, and, you know, weather willing, we're going to be back in style, we hope, in January of twenty twenty-two. We got some new faces on our board. Our goal is to spread around the world a little more. We got a ton of volunteers, but frankly, our founder, Chris, has been doing too much. So we're going to come together and try and put on a great tournament next year. And we just wanted to talk to you a little bit about how important the city, the relationship with the city in White Park is to us. We'll talk a little at the end. I'd like Chris to go through some stuff, but some of the new councilors might not know who we are, but if you've ever been down there on a, you know, hopefully a cold January where I do it, the lights run and little kids are skating, and it's, it's really become a community event. And I really believe it. I think it's done a lot for Concord in a lot of ways. And it's kind of critical that we continue to keep White Park, and in particular, the pond at White Park, clear and open, is a complement to the Monkey Round Playground and the Skate House that, you know, we've all worked to build and so that we can hopefully have another tournament next year and do a lot of other things. But first, I'd like to just maybe just remind some of you who don't know, and I'll ask Chris to do it, to tell you where we've been for the last ten years and what we've done. Yeah, no, we've come to meetings each year. It seems like we follow the food, the Capitol Food Drive each year, and, you know, they do great work in the city. And Black Ice has kind of turned into one of these community, community events that we probably, it went further than my imagination could have ever done eleven years ago. It was a nonprofit, and obviously, our goal was to give back to the community. And to date, Black Ice has given back to the community over four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Some particular ones that council, a lot of the councilors are aware of is Black Ice made an elite donation to build the new White Park Skate House, the Merrimack Lodge at White Park, with obviously help from many other, but we felt compelled year one at White Park to see how we could give back to the community. And obviously, part of that, you know, making that facility usable again is really, we take great pride in that from where it was year one. We took over the signage and advertisement at Everett Arena, probably pushing about seven years ago now, and through selling advertisement down at Everett Arena and kind of tying it into Black Ice, we've brought over two hundred and forty thousand dollars to Everett Arena, which has helped in many ways them keep ice rates at reasonable price and has allowed them to address a lot of projects that they've, would have probably had to come a lot quicker to, to ask for city, city funding for. And now it's been a good opportunity for us. The other thing is really getting involved with the, the city, local high schools. We've set up six scholarships last year that were for Concord High, Bishop Brady, Bow High School, and Pembroke Academy students that have helped, you know, spend time volunteering at Black Ice. And we've given over fifty thousand dollars to a lot of these booster clubs to have the, a lot of those kids come down and help us with strong backs, help us with, you know, some of the shoveling and some of the, some of the preparation to, to Black Ice. So really, like you said, it's gone beyond our wildest imagination to do this, but really, we hope that we can come back strong in twenty twenty-two with, with weather on our side and pandemic in our rearview mirror and hope that we can bring this kind of winter carnival, winter excitement back to, back to the city at some point.
Appreciate that overview, and thank you for sharing tonight. We do have a question, a couple of questions, actually. Counselor Champlin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, this is not a question, it's more of a comment. I just want to say, you know, Chris and Dan, I think it's appropriate that you follow or be in tandem, let me put it that way, with the Capital Region Food Program in these, at these December meetings because I think you both signify what is finest and what is best and richest about Concord, which is public-spirited citizens working hard to make the city a better place to live, whether it's by helping to feed those who, who need assistance or whether it's bringing a really stellar signature type of event to our neighborhoods. As, as a person who lives in the White Park neighborhood, I've always been impressed with the energy and just the joy that's created by the Black Ice Tournament, your receptiveness and responsiveness to neighbors, your respect for the neighborhood, but also what you bring to this city, the people who travel from all around the country to come to Concord for the excitement of a long weekend at White Park on the pond in the, in the Black Ice Tournament. The ones, one of the things I am most jealous about in terms of being jealous of Counselor Hatfield, besides her being so much brighter than me, is that she is now award for counselor and can say that she's the counselor for the Black Ice Tournament. Thanks, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counselor Fennessey?
I just want to say thank you to Chris and all his hard work that he's put in over the last decade. I think Counselor Champlin covered most of that. And to Dan, you know, I can't pass up the opportunity to ask a question of my colleague. So what's, what's up next over the next year? What are the big plans for Black Ice? What are some of the things you're looking for from the city to, to assist you with running a great tournament for January twenty twenty-two?
Counselor Fennessey, I think you're just angling for an invite to the halfway to Black Ice Hockey Tour, Golf Tournament, but we'll see if we can get that. But between, the main reason for coming on is having talked to Thomas Bowe and Dave Gill. You know, we had that crazy Asian Lotus thing this summer at the park, which is like cauliflower that overgrew the whole pond just about. And the reeds and weeds have been a perennial problem, and I think the city's on top of it with a good herbicide program that I think has been approved by NHDES. And I'm told that they're going to work on it steadily and we'll get some of that weed growth repaired back. But the big thing we're hoping for is, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think years and years and years ago, maybe half the pond was dredged, and maybe they put some gravel fill down on that, but the kind of weedy end is still muck and stumps and continuing to foster a lot of overgrowth. And I know it's somewhere in the, in the city's capital improvements budget, but I guess we're respectfully asking that the city keep it in focus and try and keep a clear vista down on the pond. I mean, we've got a beautiful skate house there now. We think we run a great tournament. We, well, we know we do when everybody's down there. It's fantastic. They're talking about redoing the Monkey Round Playground. I mean, I was part of that, I don't know how many years ago. And it's, it's, it's time to revamp it, but it's just the whole atmosphere down there, the vista, just the attractiveness of it is kind of incumbent upon having clear and moving water, and we can't let the weeds and the muck take it over. It's a, it's a man-made pond, so it has its limitations, but we're really asking, we've got good help, obviously, with the, when we run the tournament, but the in-between, we're, we're hoping, I know there's a lot of other priorities that the city has and the council has, but if we can keep that on your radar, we'd like to keep that a beautiful open space and not a weedy open space. And I think it's in everybody's best interest, so I don't know how else to address it, but we would, we're hoping we have your support, a continued support.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions or comments? Gentlemen, just say thank you. Appreciate you taking time, come tonight, and give us a quick update. We do look forward to next year. I suspect that we'll do our best to hold up our end, and you'll do the same. So, and lastly, just to say thank you again for, I think, keeping the community and reminding them that this is much bigger than just one weekend. This is a whole lot of contributions to, to many organizations throughout the year, so thank you.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to, to get in front of the council tonight, and I look forward to riding sidecar with, with Dan as, as long as, as long as I have to. Hey, you're up front. And one thing, folks, now that we've canceled the tournament for this January because of COVID, it's almost guaranteed we're going to have solid cold black ice third weekend in January. It's just, things could work. But hopefully the year after, too. Thanks again for having us. You. Thank you.
All right. That takes us back to our meeting, and could I? All right. That takes us back to our meeting. And could I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and second to approve the consent agenda. Counselor Hatfield?
Thank you, Your Honor. I had a question about item 29. Perhaps the city manager could help me with that. This is relevant to the Stickney Ave property. And I just wanted to make sure that I understood the process. So this request is to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement. But is it correct that the staff would be reporting back to us once they've done due diligence on the property so that we could make a decision about next steps?
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Manager, the, correct. This is just authorization to go work on a purchase and sales agreement. Because there's, the city council has, has not appropriate, has not decided to do anything with this property officially yet. You have, don't have any dollars to do anything with. So what we do is we work, come back with some recommendations to the city council for actions. Any of those actions, so I'll give you one example, as part of the, the RFP that went out on this, the property has to be subdivided from some of the existing property out there. So they'd have to be that, that, that public process piece needs to take place. In addition to that, you would need, if you decided after going through all of due diligence, looking at this, that the city council wanted to acquire the property, you'd have to go through an entire public hearing process, identify the dollars, and then obviously take public input and then make a decision about whether or not you think that's a good idea to move forward or not. So there's a whole series of pieces that still need to happen. But this just really starts it moving in that direction.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. We do have a motion on the consent agenda. Motion seconded. Madam Clerk, if you could call the room, please.
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessey?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Kenneson? Excuse me, Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kenneson? Going with the yes. Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Nye?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Weiss-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, just to confirm, Counselor Kenneson, did you vote yes or no?
Yes, I didn't, but yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. With that, the vote is unanimous and the consent agenda is adopted. Takes us to our public hearings this evening. Madam Clerk, would you be so kind as to read item 38, please?
Yes. It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title II Traffic Code, Chapter 18 Parking, Article 18-1 Stopping Standing and Parking, Section 18-1-6 Parking Prohibited at All Times in Designated Places for a portion of West Street.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
And our members of the council, during the August 24 meeting at the Parking Committee, Counselor Kenneson raised concerns relative to traffic movements and parking at the West Street, South State Street intersection. During the Parking Committee meeting on September 28, Karen Hill, who's the city's transportation engineer, presented findings recommending the following actions that restriped the approaching westbound through left lane on West Street. Of course, this map is online and on your agenda, so you can see it. So it's to reduce its width from 15 feet to 12 feet. This modification would push traffic over and better align the lane with proposed striping on the west side of the intersection. And prohibit stopping, standing and parking on the south side of West Street, west of South State, West Street intersection for a distance of approximately 83 feet between South State and the first driveway west of the intersection. Proposal would shift the traffic away from the parking lane. Upon review, the Parking Committee voted unanimously the recommendations be implemented. The restriping of the intersection does not require city council approval. However, removal of the on-street parking on West Street immediately west of the intersection does require approval of the ordinance that you have in front of you tonight. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Does anybody have any questions, Manager? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone wishing to testify? Mr. Manager, is anybody on the phone who'd like to testify?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. And with that, we will close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, if you could read item 30B, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title II Traffic Code, Chapter 18 Parking, Article 18-1 Stopping Standing and Parking, scheduled for Jackson Street.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
For the council, on August 4, Amy Proctor, the owner of 21 Jackson Street, contacted the Parking Committee and requested that all on-street parking for the portion of Jackson Street located between Beacon and Tremont Street be eliminated. Ms. Proctor asked that the parking to be, for the parking to be removed due to the narrow width of this area of Jackson Street, challenges existing or driveway, challenges existing exiting, well, her driveway when vehicles are parked on the roadway, as well as recent accident related thereto. During the initial review, the Parking Committee requested that all the property owners for the section of Jackson Street be notified of the request. Committee also asked for the staff to review alternatives removing all the on-street parking in order to address this issue. During the committee's subsequent review, staff provided an analysis which demonstrated that it would be infeasible to restructure on-street parking in order to avoid conflicts with driveways, noting that no other residents or property owners of this section of Jackson Street attended the meeting and that all the properties on this section of the street currently have off-street parking. The Parking Committee voted unanimously to recommend removal of the on-street parking on Jackson Street between Beacon and Tremont Streets. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Who has questions for the manager? Okay, seeing none, at this time we'll open the public hearing. And is there anyone wishing to testify? Have no one under the attendees who wish to testify? Mr. Manager, do we have anybody on the phone?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Well, with that then, we will close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, if you'd be so kind as to read item 30C, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $15,000 to support projects that enhance the services of the Concord Public Library and accepting the sum of $15,000 from the Concord Public Library Foundation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
And members of the council, due to the safety protocols put in place to combat the spread of COVID-19, the library's book sale has remained closed since early March. The book sale is run by a dedicated team of library volunteers who sort through donated items in the library's basement stacks and different gifts that we receive. They refresh the books for sale at both the first floor adult area and the second floor outside the children's room. And so therefore, the, because of that, the Concord Public Library Foundation has decided to make a gift to the city and the city council would have to accept that gift. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Anybody have questions for the manager? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Anybody wishing to testify? Here's none of the attendees. Do, is there anyone on the phone wishing to testify, Mr. Manager?
No, Your Honor.
With that then, we will close the public hearing. Takes us to our action phase. Madam Clerk, item 31, please.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title II Traffic Code, Chapter 18 Parking, Article 18-1 Stopping Standing and Parking, Section 18-1-6 Parking Prohibited at All Times in Designated Places on West Street.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion's made and second to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, if you could call the room, please.
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessey?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kenneson?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Nye?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Weiss-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
With that, the motion's adopted. Excuse me. Madam Clerk, item 32, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title II Traffic Code, Chapter 18 Parking, Article 18-1 Stopping Standing and Parking, Jackson Street.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and second to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll raise the question. Madam Clerk, if you could call the room, please.
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessey?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kenneson?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Nye?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Weiss-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
With that, the motion is adopted. Takes us to item 33, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $15,000 to support projects that enhance the services of the Concord Public Library and accepting the sum of $15,000 from the Concord Public Library Foundation.
Move approval?
Second.
Made and a second to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you could call the room, please.
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessey?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kenneson?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Nye?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Weiss-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
With that, the necessary two-thirds is adopted, or having received necessary two-thirds, the motion's approved, adopted. Thank you very much. That takes us to reports. Mr. Manager, we have a report from our deputy city manager.
Yes, so Deputy City Manager Baia wrote a report regarding the Winter's Farmers Market. So the report, cover a quick couple of pieces of that. Downtown Winter's Farmers Market has been housed for the last few years at the atrium at Seven Eagle Square, but because of new occupancy there, that won't be able to take place going forward. The owner of Seven Eagle Square, Steve Dupree, is attempting to find a new home for the market. He inquired about essentially the possibility of the city allowing the nonprofit Concord Winter Farmers Market to use the area on Store Street underneath the Laden Road Bridge. This property has been used over the last several years to provide free parking to the public. Mr. Dupree's proposal would be to erect limited structures on the site consisting of storage trailers and greenhouses. As part of that later phase, Mr. Dupree is contemplating the installation of brightly colored lights under the bridge that would not only illuminate what is there, what today is a dimly lit corridor, but also make what could be a signature attraction for Concord. He is, and I noticed it on the report section, I asked him to be available. You'd have to invite him and to talk about anything. But I do have a few diagrams which I could share with the city council so you can see, have an idea about what he's talking about. So essentially, what's before you today is, would you want to grant a license or a lease of some sort? Generally, we do licenses on city property like this for Mr. Dupree so he could help transition the farmer's market from Seven Eagle property he owns, I think with others, to this location.
Thank you very much. Who has questions for the manager? Counselor Pierce?
Thank you. Mr. Manager, in the report you talk about limited structures. What does limited mean as relative to permanent or temporary? Would these be temporary structures?
They would, I think for the most part, they'd be considered temporary structures. Think about a storage container, you've seen storage containers before, and greenhouses, which would, from what Mr. Dupree has indicated to us, you'd have to pull, put down some sort of foundation work for the foundations, work for it, work for the structures to actually be on in the, in the existing parking lot so they could, so they could set up on that. And our concern, of course, would be, if it could be done, as long as it doesn't negatively impact drainage, that could work. But we'd obviously have to review and look at those plans.
Follow-up. So these would be their year round, the foundation and footings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hatfield?
Thank you. So this is very interesting to me and, you know, I think it's, it's good that, that folks are trying to think creatively about another home for the, for the Winter Farmers Market. I just had a couple of questions. One relates to parking. You note, or Mr. Baia notes in the report that right now there are some free parking spots there. And I've been noticing lately that, that they are used quite a bit. And so I'm wondering, how many spots would, would we lose there? And what's the next closest location where someone could park for free downtown?
I could, I'll find out, could you, I'll find out how many spots there are actually there. But there, this is the only location for public free parking in that area. So there is not another location.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Please.
The other end of Store Street, where those new meters, or relatively new meters have been put in, I can't recall if the Parking Committee had recently decided to make a change on the cost of those or on the length of time. I'm sorry, I can't remember. But I, I thought there was a discussion about sort of lightening up the parking at the other end of Store Street.
I'm, I'm not intimately.
Would you like me to answer that, Mr. Spell? As chairman of the Parking Committee?
I want you, want you to handle that one.
Thank you. There have been discussions, Counselor Hatfield, but no action.
Okay. And then one other question, if I may. As someone who parks on Store Street pretty frequently, and I've heard from other councilors, also folks familiar with that area, that safety is a, is a concern. And, and I think that, you know, putting this use down there could, could actually, you know, be a positive for safety in terms of cleaning up under that space, adding some lighting, more foot traffic. But my major concern is traffic speeds. I routinely have cars not stop at the cross, the one crosswalk in the middle under the garage that exists, and also cars traveling at high rates of speed. So I wonder, will you be developing a plan to try to slow traffic? Or, or, you know, what thought has been put into ensuring that, that additional traffic, both on foot and by car in that area, will be safer?
Manager?
So the answer to your earlier question is how many spaces? The answer is 25. Okay. And I could tell you, if you, if you'd like, I just go through some brief, brief items that I had, that I had a discussion with Mr. Dupree on, and maybe he could answer those for you. So I brought up issue, you know, so the lighting plan, so the lighting plan, what would that look like? There's also a mural as part of this. What would the mural look like? You know, what would the city council want to do in terms of review of that or approval of that? The quality of the materials. As far as the operations go, the entire facility would be wired into the grid, so there wouldn't be generators out there, so you don't have that noise. We talked about pedestrian safety, because I think the big thing is, and the mayor's mentioned this to me in the past, people aren't used to, a lot of people parking down there on a regular basis and actively crossing that way, that all of a sudden, if you have all that, all those people down there at one time, and people drive through, they're not used to that. How is that going to be handled? So Mr. Dupree's aware of that, that's a concern. So Mr. Dupree is aware of that, that's a concern. And also, just so you know, there's, you can, while you can use it for storage and sales, you cannot, even those greenhouses, you cannot grow things in those greenhouses. It was, Mr. Dupree was proposing the greenhouses simply as an enclosed structure so people could actually move around. As far as licensing goes, there'd be fees for the vendors, just like in any other type of farmers' market on public property. There's, under the RSA's requirement for real estate tax to be paid for this, you'd have to talk, we'd have to negotiate with Dupree in terms of the number of years. He was looking for ten years, plus some sort of extensions on those. And of course, everything would need to be permitted because it's on city property. And of course, there's always the issue of bridge maintenance, because it's under a city-owned bridge. So if we did need to maintain that, we had talked to Mr. Dupree about, well, if we have to tell you that you need to leave or remove the structures, as Counselor Pierce had talked about earlier, being temporary, so that we could do our work, because it could be in an emergency situation. So Mr. Dupree is also aware of that. But, so I think he's prepared to answer specifics, if you have anything really beyond that. Hope that helps.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Counselor Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. City Manager, perhaps the city engineer is aware or would remind us that during the winter months, the weevil program, which is little stand-up things by all the schools, they typically go to places like that crosswalk because it does get so dark and it doesn't have to interfere with snow plowing in that area because it's covered by the legislative parking garage. Is that still in effect? Do we still move the weevil there during the winter? Because we can't have them out in front of the schools because of the snow? I think that's right.
You do, weevil programs still exist. As a matter of fact, if my memory is correct, the Transportation Policy Advisory Committee actually limits the number of weevils. There's an official location of where the weevils are, how many can go off, because the concern was if you have too many, then they become invisible weevils and people just drive around like it's nothing. So, for example, there's one out by White Park on Center Street, they're all around. But yes, we do actively still use the weevil program. So that could be one location where one goes, particularly in the beginning, just to alert people that something's different down here.
Thanks.
Okay. I think we have a lot of questions. I think the manager did an excellent job trying to answer most of these, but since we do have Mr. Dupree as one of the attendees, could you please bring him in as panelist so that we'll give him a chance to respond to some of these directly? And if you have any further questions, you can ask him directly. Okay, Mr. Dupree, welcome. Mr. Dupree, if you could unmute yourself, that'd be great.
Even better. Some people like me better muted.
Anyway. Did you hear the questions?
Yes.
All right. Would you like to respond to some of those?
Yes. Briefly, we became aware of this area when we took ownership of the Dixon Avenue buildings and got a lot of complaints from tenants about some of the activities that occur in the free parking area down there. If you don't know, that seems to be an area where the police have to go a lot because when you go to the back of the parking lot on the east side, you're down on the railroad embankment. When I was down there the other day, there was an unregistered trailer that people were living in, a campfire, and what looked to be a couple drug deals going on. So all of our tenants have complained about that area. It's a dark area. It's an underused area. At the same time, the Winter Farmers Market used to use Seven Eagle, our atrium. It had some problems. If you've ever been in, it's on two or three levels. Number one. Number two, it's really not appropriate for moving around during the COVID era, and who knows what virus might be next, Lord forbid. And the state became a primary tenant in Seven Eagle and really isn't excited about having heavy traffic in there on Saturday because they use it a lot on weekends. So the farmers' market approached me and said, do you have any ideas? That's an underused area. I started dreaming with Jonathan Holly and Frank Lemay. And the idea we came up with essentially is to use under the bridge, which is a dark area, and then the parking now is first come, first served, and erect two greenhouses, as shown on the plans that I think you have in the report, that can be moved and that have what I call tractor-trailer boxes at the end, which is where you house the utilities. It can, we're not putting in real footings because you'd have to go down deep, but you can't put a greenhouse just on a paved surface because there's frost and it'll move it up and down. So you put what they call a shallow sort of ledge footing. And also, we need doors so trucks can drive in, and those have to be fairly solid on solid footings so that they don't move, the frames don't move. But in essence, the goal is to create these two greenhouses, which you buy as a kit. You put double-stacked trailer boxes at each end, which provides security and houses the mechanicals. It's set up so it's one way in, one way out, heated, cooled, well-lit. And that, as part of our plan, is to make it very sort of colorful artistic lighting, so it draws the eye and is attractive. And also, we found that the better you light an area, as somebody mentioned in their comments, the more safe it becomes. We share the concern about the crosswalk that's under the garage. I've crossed it for a year and a half until the state took over our space. It's dark, it's dangerous. I think the best solution there is to work with the state to get permission to put more lights right under that crosswalk area to highlight it because it's dark, particularly in the winter, cars can be barreling up Store Street headed north. This would not be used for growing, it'd be for storage. If we had to move, because the city needed us to move temporarily, we could slide south onto the parking lot I own, or if we needed to move permanently, we could. We hope that won't be necessary. We also think that it might be an ideal place to do the summer market because people would stay longer than noon. And as you know, in the summer market, they're limited on the number of vendors they can have. We have a parking lot that holds four hundred cars that we can make available for free parking on the weekend and for vendor space. So the farmers are a great group of people. To be honest, I really, until I came to being asked for my help, I had no appreciation for how many of them really rely on this as a second job or a primary job to make a living. And I mean, the vendors are calling me going, I hope we get this, we need this not only this winter, but every winter. I'd be glad to answer any other questions.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Since we have Mr. Dupree here, is anybody wishing to ask, anybody having questions? Okay, looks like you got off easy. Thank you so much. Appreciate you taking the time to come tonight.
Thank you. We appreciate your consideration of this. Thanks.
Mr. Manager, anything you want to add following that?
Would you like me to show some of the things that Mr. Dupree has sent along in terms of graphics, so you could see what the intent is?
I think that'd be helpful.
Okay, let me see if I can do that. So I'm going to share my screen, so please be patient with this for a second. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. So this is, I don't know if this is the most, the latest from Mr. Dupree, but just to give you an idea of the scale, you can see kind of the greenhouse structures going linear, you know, underneath the bridge, with the storage structures on the end. And as far as the kind of the lighting scheme, this is just an earlier concept that they had. I'm sure they'll refine it as time goes on, but this is kind of what they were talking about in terms of location and color and scale.
Appreciate that. Anybody, now they've kind of seen the concept design, does anybody want to, any questions?
I'll ask a question, Your Honor.
Sure. I apologize. I'm just kind of strongly looking through. Mr. Counselor Champlin?
Yeah, that's okay, because in the, with the screen share, it was hard to find the, put your, raise your hand icon. I think this is a great idea. I did have a question to clarify about the greenhouses, but the city manager answered that. I had not seen that schematic drawing there before, but I think that's exactly what I would have hoped it would be. As I think Mr. Dupree said, this is kind of a dark, gritty corner of the city and where dark, gritty things sometimes happen. And I think that this type of activity would go a long way towards rectifying that and really using an underutilized part of our downtown. So, bravo.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well then, let me ask the question to the councilors. Would somebody be willing, are you interested in authorizing the manager to move forward with a license agreement for farmers' market in this area?
Do you need a motion?
I think tonight, I think we should do that, yes.
I will make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to move forth, authorizing the manager to open an out-licence agreement with Mr. Dupree and the, behalf of the Concord Farmers Market. Mr. Manager?
Should I choose my best judgment or bring something back?
My motion includes a best judgment.
As does my second.
Thank you to both of you. Okay, no pressure, Tom. You got this. All right, with that, is there any other discussion? Any thoughts, concerns?
Just had one. Thank you very much to Counselor Champlin for answering the parking question. I do want to explore with the parking committee what we might be able to do, because I know there are a lot of people, particularly workers and folks downtown, who scout around for those free spots, and I think they will be missed. So I would like to revisit that with the parking committee.
Counselor Hatfield, just to stand aside directly from my point of view, this is something that's been bothering me for a while. It's something we have talked about, the parking committee. Some of us would actually like to see us go back to freeing up those spaces at the other end. There's a lot of other discussions. It's like truly the whack-a-mole game where you have free one space and they move someplace else. So it's got to be kind of a comprehensive look when we do it, but I think your point is extremely well taken, from my perspective. Counselor Fantasy?
I just want to say, I think this is a great project, a great idea. I've taken a couple of walks down there in the early morning hours just to see what it's like. And I think it would be great to bring some economic activity there and get some bodies down there so we can start to develop that corridor in our city.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, ready for the question. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach? Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Nayan?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
Great. With that, the motion is adopted. Thank you all. We have no new business before us. We have one item under unfinished business. Is there anyone who would like to take it up? Okay. So it takes us to comments requests. Anyone wishing to share anything? I'm just going to get down the road. Counselor Hatfield?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to ask the city manager about free parking for the holidays because I want to make sure people know about that.
Am I supposed to know something about free parking over the holidays?
So I saw on Facebook, I think it was In-Town Concord or the city Facebook account was saying, you know, take advantage of free parking for holiday shopping, and so I wanted to know about that.
We did, the free parking during the Thanksgiving Day and the day after Thanksgiving, and I believe the morning, the Saturday morning there, I think that was, I think that was it. We, just for a little historical perspective, we've talked to, over the years, it's gone back and forth, and Counselor Champlin is really good at history, can probably explain this better than I can. There's, the merchants have gone back and forth about whether or not they actually want free parking in the downtown. Some have wanted it, some have not wanted it because it causes people to just stay in certain parking spaces for long periods of time and doesn't have the storefront turnover that people are looking for. So the parking committees wrestled with that over the years and actually, we did try it several years back and decided to leave it the way it is right now. So, if we do anything, we would publicize it, but right now, there isn't any.
Thank you. I have two other things, Your Honor, if I could. One is, I just wanted to very sincerely thank the city manager and the staff as we wrap up 2020. It's just been such a challenging year, and I just feel like everyone's been going above and beyond our extra responses, and I can only imagine that it's been a very challenging time for everyone. So I wanted to thank everyone for all of their efforts. And then I also, for you, Mr. Mayor, I have not been involved in the city's committee to address homelessness. It's something I'm going to get involved in. But with all of the media coverage of the things that are happening right here in our city where people are living outside and with fires and other unsafe conditions, I didn't know if there's anything you can share with us about your thinking on this issue or, you know, what can we do? You know, it's not a simple, there are no simple solutions, I'm afraid, but it's really something that is top of mind for me as I witness it as I'm traveling around the city and read news stories. So I just wanted to ask you, if there's anything, if you have thoughts to share with us.
So Counselor Rice Hawkins had asked me to do a quick little update, and I tell you what, I'll give a more of a state perspective because you might be aware of some of the things going on with the mayor across the state. And I'll recognize Counselor Champlin to, maybe we can tandemly talk about some of the things going on locally, if that's okay. So we'll work our way through and we'll do that last. Is that right? Okay. Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Thank you, and I appreciate you all addressing that. The other question I had is just if we could get an update on how the leaf pickup season went with our new equipment and where we wrapped up the season with that.
I'll be glad. I think there's probably three things to know about the leaf pickup. Of course, we did do a different system this time, thanks to city council and thanks to a lot of outside dollars that we were able to bring in to pay for those changes and protect city staff from, as best we could, from the COVID pandemic. So the leaf pickup, just some interesting things that you might want to know. The leaf pickup started, the latest it has ever started this year. And that's just the way the calendar fell, and that actually worked out in our favor because the later we can start the program, the more leaves are potentially off the trees, which the more you pick up and it's less for people, you know. Because the issue that council used to get was, it would come around, it would come around to your area of the town too early, and the leaves were still on the trees. Well, we pushed it back as far as we possibly could. And so this year was the latest we've ever started. We actually completed the area for the pickup in the enclosed drainage area. General Services did a fabulous job with this, and they really get all the credit for this. They picked up that area the earliest they've ever picked it up before. So in essence, the earlier you pick it up, the less of those leaves get into the drainage system and start causing clog-ups and problems down the line. So they did a fantastic job getting around to those areas, getting them cleaned up. Also, we picked up the most amount of leaves we've ever picked up in history. So in all three counts, in all three places where it really counts, everything worked in our favor. So I think the new system was a tremendous success. General Services took a risk recommending it and going forward with it, but it's been outstanding, and this has really been a great year for us getting around doing it. As a matter of fact, we, even in the places where we missed a few places, we went and picked those up. The last one we picked up is today out in, it was today or Friday, in Ward Ten. So the program's complete, and it went very, very well. Thanks to General Services.
Thank you.
Counselor Castle?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mine is more of a statement. I want to thank and commend the General Services Department for the excellent job that they did with the downtown snow removal, which was like concrete. I saw... I saw folks down there with shovels when I thought they probably could use pickaxes. But anyway, they did a tremendous job and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilor Fennessey?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is my 12th meeting now as a member of the city council. It has been quite, quite a year to start off. I don't think I ever expected that, I would not have seen most of you since February and that we would be meeting remotely for most of the year. But I just want to thank members of the council, the mayor, the city manager, members of the, the city personnel for all of their help and assistance and hopefully I didn't bother anybody too much, but I've certainly learned a lot and I'm really hoping sometime next year, we can all be back in one room together.
Thank you. Councilor Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to take a moment to talk about the golf course because we had a stellar season this year. Of course, it helped when a lot of people wanted to be outside to participate. At the golf course was fantastic. We do have winter operations that operate there as well. We have weather permitting, snow, of course, cross-country skiing. New this year, we do have an area for snow shoeing. It does go a little bit off the golf course in order to protect, protect the grass underneath. But it's a great opportunity for people to come over to the golf course and see the beautiful scenery that we have there. We have our indoor winter league, which is the two simulators as well. There is still some space for people if they are interested in participating. Our pros would also love to have people give lessons so that they can be better on the course in the spring. And of course, the last part is the parks that are around the city. We've seen so much use for individuals, especially during this time, getting out and enjoying everything that there is to offer for our walking trails. We did have a request from a citizen in regards to leashes on trails for people that are walking their dogs. And we don't actually have something like that in our ordinances today. There's leash rules for other areas, but in that time where people are going out, there are some dogs off-leash that like to greet other people that perhaps don't want to be greeted on the trails. And I'd like to make a recommendation that we have our community development department and perhaps planning trails, whoever, to look at the opportunity of perhaps a leash rule for our trails on the public. We did also have a couple of people with some aggressive dog behavior. I think it would be a good time to take a look at that since we are really getting outside and enjoying everything that the city has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bouchard?
Thank you, and this is a great segue. I just wanted to let the council know and those watching that we have an improved, a new and improved dog park in the, in the city that was built, still phase one of our Terrell Park planned. It was built up the hill on the east side, now has a paved driveway. And like all good things in the city, it started with a small group of volunteers who brought the idea of having a dog park to the city years ago, led by Anita, Anita Hickey and her late husband, Jack Hickey. And from there, we were able to build this beautiful dog park that we needed to move because of our plans for the turf field. But what we ended up with was a dog park that is now paved. We ended up with, we had lots of help, the state park staff helped the city staff coordinate the land and water conservation fund grant that was $100,000 to the city. We also had the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail donate over $60,000 to the dog park and the trail and they also built like an information kiosk there. And the Hope Memorial, the, the Dog SPCA, they, they for years have been taking care of the inside of the park, removing waste and whatever else has to be taken care of. And the Concord Rotary donated over $12,000 to install a doggy water fountain. And we're also able to enlarge the park, to build a better park because of the engineer, ingenuity of our city engineering staff that realized that the original fencing for the original dog park could be recycled and repurposed into the new dog park. So now we have beautiful, open view of the river, the dog park. There are benches where people can sit and look at the river and there's also a small section of paved trails. So it's a wonderful place to bring your dogs to play and they don't have to be on their leash to be in there. And there's two sections, large, for large dogs and small dogs. So well done and a nice, just a nice bringing together of all different volunteers and groups in our city to build something good. So thanks to everybody.
Thank you. Councilor Grady Sexton?
Your Honor, I just wanted to follow up on Counselor Kretovic's comments about unleashed dogs on trails. I do know that the Conservation Commission is going to be hearing from the constituents who had a dog bite on one of the trails. They are going to hear from him on January 13th at 7:00 PM and maybe addressing this, that, the issue of unleashed dogs on trails. So I just want to note that.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I have, anyone else? Did I miss anybody? Okay, I'll, I'll kick the question regarding homeless, let me kick that off. So as you're probably all very, very well aware, as it was covered extremely well, there was lots of activity in Manchester regarding both state government and local government. And my personal commentary was, there was a lot of pointing fingers. So the Hampshire mayors got together, we, we actually speak about once a month. And at one of our calls, this was probably one of the primary topics of conversation. At that time, we all decided we would write to the governor asking to collaborate with the cities and to try to formulate some sort of response and not only the immediate crisis, but of long-term, what can we do to work together? The governor wrote back to the man, to the mayors and welcomed the cooperative, you know, participation. The governor also pointed out a lot of it, mostly through CARES Act money, how many dollars were actually going back into these communities regarding homeless. And all honesty, the amounts is actually staggering. There is a lot of money in the system right now. I spoke to our Human Services Director, she confirmed those dollars. Many of those dollars that the, the governor has directed back to, to us and all communities have really resulted in preventing a lot of folks from actually ending up being homeless and it kept them in the homeless, which is, which is obviously a really good thing. So you probably saw the resolution to what happened and you can pick a side as to who you think was right or wrong. But that resulted in the governor starting a housing stability committee and task force. The first report was due today, the 14th. There are about 45 members or so, 43 members on the committee. There are three city mayors that were appointed, Mayor McCauley, Rochester, Mayor Keane and myself. So there are three mayors because obviously I think we all recognize and the state is also on board, recognizing the fact that, you know, you're not seeing the pressure's on cities, you know, you're not, it's not, if you look at Merrimack County, it's primarily Franklin and Concord who receive most of those, the need for the services. And most folks aren't going to Andover or, or, you know, Webster. So here they, they come to Concord. We, as a group, did issue our preliminary report as the governor had requested it for today. There is immediate action items and there are also more long-term action items. Some include the legislature, some, some don't. But there's a lot of policy decisions that are going to be throughout the year in terms of how we deal with housing and such. On the immediate issue, after talking to our Human Services Director and the other mayors, one of the things that we are lacking is a lot of really good data in the cities so that we know exactly who we're serving, how many people we're serving, what is the need, how big is the need and such. The other thing that we don't know is necessarily the cities is that, as we can see, there is a snip amount of dollars going back to these communities, but unfortunately, it's not going to Manchester, Nashua, Concord, Rochester, et cetera. A lot, most of this money is going to the not-for-profit community. And what happens is that when you look to place somebody or when you ask the question, how many more people have been taken out of a shelter and placed into a home? How many people have taken out of a tent and put into a shelter and to temporary housing? We don't have that data. And in fact, we, we don't see that there's been a whole lot more capacity added to solving the, the immediate crisis. Now, some reasons that we have found are because we are limited by the CARES, CARES Act dollars. For instance, the Concord Coalition and Homelessness was able to use some of those dollars to work, to expand the emergency shelter this winter. But the current shelter that, that we all recognize, so it was really important that they had last year and all, you had about 40 people with bunk beds, you're able to, to be housed during the evenings. With the money from COVID, you can't add capacity. You can only make modifications so that people can socially distance and such, but it's, you're stuck at that 40 number. And that's one of the problems that all the cities are facing is that, you know, you're seeing an increase in numbers, but you're limited in what you can do for added capacity. And I think I'm going to recognize Counselor Champlin to talk a little bit about last, at the end of last week, the activities of the Concord Coalition and Homelessness and what they were able to do with some of the other CARES Act money. And again, if anybody has any questions at the end, I'd be glad to try to answer them. Counselor Champlin?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Your Honor. You know, the, the issue of homelessness, I was on a website of a homeless, national homeless organization and on the website, they had a, a video which was talking about how the challenge of homelessness is that it's complex and it's ever-changing. And they likened it to the difference between throwing a baseball and throwing a bird. You know, when you throw a baseball, you have a pretty good idea of where it's going to land, end up. When you throw a bird, it can go in any direction because it flies. And homelessness is really like that. I think that people look at it and they, and they, they wish that there was a simple and easy answer and, and there, and there isn't. One of the issues that the mayor touched upon, that the Concord Coalition and Homelessness is working on is to conduct a, is to conduct a by-name census of the chronically homeless population in Concord. There's an estimate that we have about 125 chronically homeless individuals. These are individuals by definition who have been homeless for a year or more. And those folks, you know, are, are usually only identified in an annual snapshot type of census that, that takes place with homeless relief folks going out into the encampments and kind of doing a nose count. And the problem with that is that it, it doesn't give you a holistic view. It doesn't give you enough knowledge to be able to effectively impact the homeless population, the chronically homeless who take up most of the resources, have most of the significant problems that have to be addressed. And so the CCEH is currently conducting and will soon conclude that, that by-name census. I, they also have been working to try to expand capacity. As you know, they have been operating the Housing First Program, which is a model that's been used in other communities there. Recently, Abbling, Texas became the fourth country, fourth city in the country to reach virtual zero in terms of homelessness. And that's something that I hope, I think that we aspire to and that the coalition is aspiring to. Part of the ways we can do that is, as the mayor has said, there is a, are a large number of agencies that receive funding within the city to deal with homelessness and they all do a sterling job. But one of the initiatives I think I certainly would like to see is a weekly collaboration using the by-name census to identify a track for each of those chronically homeless people in the city to get them into permanent housing step by step. You know, you know, the big issue for us is housing and is the availability of housing to move anybody into, as all of you in this meeting know. And so in combination with acts of mercy, people wanting to individually reach out and help the homeless population, there also has to be an acknowledgement that in order to get that, in order to prevent them from being homeless or to get them out of homelessness, we have to have places to put them. And therefore, there has to be, I think, an understanding that, you know, we have to be building more housing and have to be providing more housing opportunities for folks in order to ultimately solve the problem.
That give you an overview now, or is there other questions specifically around those, on that topic?
Thank you very much, that was extremely helpful. You know, I guess another aspect that maybe we can discuss in the future is I, I've seen a lot of folks complaining on social media about trash and dumps and the impact on the river. So, you know, I think the hu, for me, the human piece is first. But, you know, I think it also is, it's a challenge, you know, it has a negative impact on, on our city in other ways as well. So I, I would be interested in, in taking a really holistic approach, especially in this interim period when people, when, as Counselor Champlin points out, we don't have the housing opportunities. So there are going to be folks living outside and can we work on safety, both for them and for others who might interact with them in the interim so that we don't have fires and, you know, other, other problems created when, when folks live outside and don't have a lot of options. But, but this has been very helpful for me and I thank you, those of you who are putting time into this. It really is important for me.
Rice Hawkins, did you have any further questions or does that give you enough?
I was just going to ask if, maybe Counselor Champlin can do this. I know that on the community pages, especially as more of our homeless population has been more visible with some of the foliage down and things of that nature that people have been asking, how can they help in this moment? So if Counselor Champlin would maybe give a couple of recommendations of things that he would direct people to do or the volunteer opportunities for how they can get engaged. I think there's a lot of desire to help right now.
Thank you for that question, Counselor Rice Hawkins. I think people can certainly contact many of the organizations that provide housing for the homeless. That includes the Concord Coalition and Homelessness, Salvation Army, the Friends Program, which runs family center, family shelter, the Family Promise, which also provides a family or shelter for, for homeless families. But ultimately, I think it comes back to this, which is the greatest thing that people can do to help long-term is to be receptive to attempts to build more workforce and more low-income housing in the city, which is something I think that, that people in our neighborhoods frequently find themselves concerned about and, and in opposition to. But if you ultimately want to solve the homeless problem, we have to be able to build the housing for folks to be moved into. And, and so I would just leave that with you. There are great volunteer organizations that are working hard to address the homeless population. But we also need as a city to kind of gird our loins, to use a biblical term, and step up and fully support efforts to have adequate housing.
Thank you. Counselor Keach?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll jump on what Byron just said, but I, I, I do have to comment on sort of the elephant in the room. It's not Concord's responsibility to solve this problem. It's a systemic problem that needs to be solved at a level that is greater than Concord. And, you know, I've, as you all know, I'm on the board of the Friendly Kitchen and I'm supportive of all this. But there is also that idea that, you know, build it and they will come. And there's an awful lot of people that come to Concord because we are so generous and we do a bunch. And I'm offended to some degree that our neighbors don't step up and, and, and don't take, take the lead. and 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 don't take take the lead. So I think that the solution is statewide, nationwide, but again, we all know it comes back to substance abuse, mental health issues and, you know, dealing with those problems and and ultimately that's the solution. I I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you. Uh, Council Fenton.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Champlin, I was uh really interested in the comment you made with respect to developing the census. Um, I was wondering who's going to take responsibility for developing it? And then who would be um the entity or or the group responsible then for sort of following up with the the members of the census to to track where they are?
Uh, that's a great question, Council Fantasy. It's being conducted by the uh Concord Coalition to End Homelessness. Um, this is something that has been a statewide goal, I understand, for a number of years, and it has not occurred. Uh, and so the folks at the Concord Coalition to End Homelessness decided that for Concord, they would take it on themselves because it was a critical piece of being able to effectively address the chronically, the chronic, the chronically homeless. Excuse me. Uh, you know, there are a lot of people who pass through homelessness uh due to uh an illness or due to uh, you know, some unexpected financial downturn, loss of a job. And those people can, you know, usually in normal circumstances, non-COVID, can be gotten into some sort of housing fairly quickly through city welfare or through other agencies that we've talked about. But the chronically homeless are the people who have the severe drug or alcohol problems, mental illness issues, as you know, physical disability issues were much more difficult uh to uh to house. Uh, and so those are the folks who are going to be uh uh who are going to be identified in the census and the the CCEH will in fact be working on an ongoing basis with those people and will make sure that the census is up to date. Thanks. Great question.
Anyone else still have any, either on this or any other topic? Okay, Mr. Manager, do you have anything you'd like to share with the group?
No, your honor.
Okay, I have no items for suspending. Biggest is to our last item, and that's adjournment. Uh, this being the last item, uh meeting of the year, I wish everyone a happy holidays and uh with that, I think I have a last promotion to adjourn.
Listen to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Uh, and what, we call Rogers.
Council Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Buell.
Yes.
Council Champlin.
We.
Council Fantasy.
See.
Council Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Council Hatfield.
Yes.
Council Keach.
Yes.
Council Kennison.
Yes, and stay well, everyone.
Council Kretovic.
I was gonna say it's good to see everyone, but yes, I'm ready to adjourn.
Council Matson.
Yes.
Council Nyan.
Yes.
Council Pierce.
Oh, oh, yes.
Council Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Council Todd.
Yes.
And Council Werner.
Yes.
All righty. Big safe.
Well.
Take care, everyone. Keep your distance.
Happy holidays.
Holidays. Happy holidays.
Hi, thank you.